outside.
It's just notable.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I would like to call this workshop to order. My name is Abby Branch and I'm the Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we have any public comments before we begin?
We save the public comments for after.
Well, actually. Oh, absolutely.
What happens if I say something and then you say something and I can't say no more?
One hundred percent. And and so what I thought we'll do, I mean, that's a great, does anybody else have any comments to begin? And actually, I answered for that, Gio, and can they make their comments?
I agree.
I I thought that it did anyone else before we start the guess.
Can we get an introduction of everybody?
Absolutely, and we are going to do that. That is on my, that is my plan. Now, I'm delighted. Anything else? Anything else you could think of? Let me know. Mona and I were in band together. So our, what I thought we'll do, let's discuss the housekeeping kind of for to begin. I'm going to deliver a presentation which is about thirty eight slides and I hope, and I'm going to do my best to not put you to sleep and to answer questions and be thorough. I'm going to go through it quickly. But before we begin, I just would like to, my name is Abby Branch, I'm the Chair. I grew up in Alpine. I would like us all to kind of start from right to left and introduce ourselves. We are a volunteer commission that is appointed by city council. We all share a love for this town and want to see Alpine prosper. That is our intent for for being here and for helping and and spending our time away from from family and jobs and, you know, to to help out. We are here to work with you. And, you know, we don't always agree. We try to, you know, collectively decide what is best for Alpine. But you're, I just appreciate you all being here. I was appointed to planning and zoning in two thousand and twenty with the with the task of addressing our current historic district that we have. And I, it was during COVID, we were meeting on Zoom. And I kept waiting for this thing to pop up on the agenda. Okay, is a historic district going to appear? When when do I, when do I do my work? And it never did, and it never did. And finally, you know, I I I, we had some, there were some changes. We had a new city manager come into place. We had elections, new city council. So I asked the question, I believe it was to Gio, when are we going to address this historic district, which is what, you know, one of the things that I was tasked with? He's like, oh, you need to put that on the agenda. I'm like, oh, I put that on the agenda. Okay, so before that, our planning and zoning commission was what, you know, we would receive an agenda that was given to us by council or city or, you know, our our city manager. And we had voted on that, but we didn't really have this dialogue like, or, you know, try to implement things. But now it's, you know, we have the opportunity to do that. So let's start over here. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Rich Portillo from Alpine.
And.
Tom Griffiths from Alpine. I'm new.
I'm Joanna Lacston. We live in Alpine. My husband works over at the college and brought us here about six years ago, and we live in one of those historic properties here. And we just have a love for the area. That's one reason what that brought us here. And we'd like to see we continue to grow in the area that it stays where it's at as far as historical goes, but it, you know, for us, that's why we came here. That's what brought us here. So we really want to enhance that portion of it.
Matt Walter, most of y'all know me from the Museum of the Big Ben and teaching history here at Soros. Wasn't born here, born in Oakland, but got here as quick as I could.
My name is Sebo Levas, twenty years residence in this community, twenty three years business owner, local business owner. I'm very active in the community and very active in the Catholic Church, and it's a pleasure to serve my time.
And one of the things we want this to be an engaged discussion and we, there's no dumb questions. I ask them, I ask questions all the time. I just decided a long time ago, but I'm going to be embarrassed. So what I'll do, if we'll give the presentation first and then we'll open it up for discussion. That way, if my answer, maybe I'll answer your question in two or three slides or maybe not. But if you, if something comes to mind, just jot it down and and then after I'll stay here all night if we need to. So our intent today is to, is to define historic districts. What, what are they? Also, describe the three types of designations. There are federal historic districts, there are state historic districts, there are local historic districts. There's also buildings and monuments that are on the the National Register or on the State Register. But they're different. Those aren't in historic districts. Those are, those are structures that are separate. We want to discuss thoroughly the pros and cons. And I got to tell you, when I first, I love history and I think, you know, I like to travel to places with historic districts. I wasn't sure when I began serving if I was pro historic district or against them. So it took a lot of research, and that's what I've been doing for the last three years is I read ordinances. I talk to people that live in historic districts. I learned, so anyway, let's, I keep an open mind, and I'm not saying that maybe tonight, maybe you change my mind. So there's always something to learn. I don't think I know it all. We're also going to discuss Alpine's current historic district. And what many of you may not know is that you're currently, that if you, if you received a letter to come to this meeting, it's very likely you currently live in Alpine's historic district. We'll go into detail on that, and that may come as a surprise, came as a surprise to me. Also, we're going to talk about how historic districts are regulated. That's very important, and I think it's so important in a town or anywhere where historic districts may bleed into residential. You know, that's, we, it's, we want to talk about that. Are they regulated? Are they not regulated? How they're regulated? What that means? Also, we want to talk about potential revisions to our historic district. Our first slide. You can get our second slide. So this is one of my favorite photos of Alpine because this reminds me of my childhood. I hope that all of you can see the the monitor. If you need to scoot back to see the monitor, because we will be referencing a lot of slides and photos. So what you see here is the Bellis Grocery Store next to Hotel Richie. Taken some time in the nineteen seventies. And growing up here through nineteen ninety one, when I graduated high school, this was where we would go. We had a history project or we wanted to, you know, peek in the windows and, you know, think about what, you know, Alpine long ago or tell a ghost story. Now, Gio, you can go to the next slide. We probably need a signal. I wish I had a bell. So the next slide is shortly after the revitalization of Murphy Street. And one of the things, one of the the first things I noticed here is there's people in the street. There's parties in the street. There's people going in and out of the store and and running in the street. That would have never happened previously. So historic preservation and historic districts, one of the points that I I would like to to make clear is that it's not for the business owner, it's not for the advisory board, the planning zoning or the city manager. It is, it's for the community. There are so many, there's so much evidence and studies that have been done about historic districts and how they can add value. They can add economic recovery and connect communities. I mean, that's, and I mean, I see some of you shaking your heads, and that's fine. We are going to go through this and that we're going to talk about the cons too. Those are, those are the the pros, definitely. So historic districts are designated districts that recognize a group of buildings. They can also recognize archaeological resources for other properties as historically or architecturally significant. You can have small historic districts and big historic districts. Additionally, there's different types of historic districts, not designation types. You can have residential historic districts, industrial railroad historic districts, downtown historic districts. There can, there's just a variety. What you'll see in Alpine's historic district is we have one historic district that is everything. The current historic district we have has residential industrial railroad, and this is the current approved historic district. Railroad, we have downtown, it's everything. It is very large. And that's one of the things we're going to talk about tonight. There are three types of historic districts. So the the historic district that many of us think of is the federal historic district. So this is the, this is a district that is designated by the National Park Service. It's listed on the National Register of Publics, or National Register of Historic Spaces. And this is a largely honorary district that creates a fantastic inventory of properties in the United States. They in nineteen sixty six, the National Historic Preservation Act passed. And that was after, at that point, it gave legislative ability to protect historic and cultural resources. But this is very important about a national historic district. They are not property, they cannot delegate or dictate what property owners can do with that property. It's a designation that if somebody has a national historic district or a national landmark, they can then begin to apply for grants or tax credits. But that, but they cannot say, okay, you can't, you need to paint your building, you know, red, white and blue. I mean, they they have no jurisdiction. That it is a fantastic resource because it keeps, it catalogs all these historic properties in the United States and lists their historic significance, why they're there. And this is the same thing, you know, this is we have this in Marathon is a national historic district. Marfa is a national historic district. We are, Alpine is not a national historic district. We are not proposing it be national. The next level is state. Now, after, in nineteen sixty six, after the ACHP was passed, then organizations like the Texas, I think at the time they called it the Texas Agency, which was a survey outfit that would go and survey historical properties. They, after nineteen sixty six, then they began to have resources to educate people about historic preservation. This is also an agency. This is a plaque. This isn't, they they cannot delegate what we can and can't do with our buildings. We are not proposing, and I'm not even sure if there are state historic districts in Texas. We are not proposing that Alpine is a state historic district. The current historic district that Alpine has is a local. And it's actually, so this is, this is a district that is regulated by zoning. And it's a district designated by the city council that can shift of a section of Alpine that that is intended to preserve historical, cultural and architectural character. This district was voted by council and approved on February fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. It was passed by two thirds majority of city council. Now, there's some, some holes in that district, and that's why we're here. We, and we think that we need to rewrite this ordinance and make it smaller. And what we're proposing is possibly just doing a downtown historic district that go that covers a couple of blocks from in front of the Holland Hotel to the courthouse. We have three different options that we're going to talk about with you. But currently in the district, Gio, what are the boundaries? And I'll show you a map.
So I did leave, I made a rough draft map that is in front of you all. The boundaries are basically Loop Road, the northern boundary, East Brown Avenue by the golf course. The western boundary is Fifteenth Street. It goes down, the southern boundary goes down Avenue E. No, no, all all end is down through Seventh Street all the way to A Mountain. And then the our east boundary is, as I stated previously, Loop Road all the way down through Neville Haynes. And also in front of you is some, are some documents from when this was previously discussed at planning and zoning and any other.
Can you put it on? And can we pass it around? Can we pass it around?
Yeah, we can pass it.
Yeah. Sorry. This is the current. Yeah, this, this is the current historic district. This is the one that was voted two thousand and eleven. And this is why we're here, because we, I, there's some of us that think this district is too large. And also, when we go back to the previous slide, don't go back to the previous, I'm just going to explain it. When we talked about the types of historic districts, you know, are they residential? Are they industrial railroad? This is everything. This is every kind of historic district you can think of. Not designation, we're talking about types, in one gargantuan district. So why are we here tonight? We want to, to, to look at this and we want to think about, okay, this is actually going into residential, right? So what a local historic, historic, historic district does is there's going to be an overlay, or there is currently an overlay with rules and guidelines for building. And so one of the things that I think we need to do and our team thinks we need to do is create a new ordinance or rewrite the existing ordinance. Possibly establish a historical landmark commission similar to planning and zoning, but these would be, this would be a separate city commission with expertise and hopefully continuing education on historic districts, governing historic districts. They would also address demolition in whatever historic district we, whatever boundary. If someone wanted to raise or demolish a building, the overlay would clearly state that the new building in its place would be a similar architectural style as existing. It's very important to note that historic districts and the historic, the current overlay, and we'll get into the, the nuts and bolts of that, that it addresses the the public right of way. That means what we all see from the street. So it's just the front, the front of the building. So if someone in a, in a historic district wanted to, you know, modernize their house, expand in the back, they, that would, that the overlay, you know, you do not need a certificate of appropriateness or anything, and we'll get into nothing but the faults of that. You can go to the next slide. Why historic are good for our community? We're going to discuss the pros and then we'll discuss the cons. So we, all of the data that we gather, there are hundreds of studies on why historic districts are good for communities. And, and we're currently, the, the, the study that I'm referencing right now was created by Place Economics. It's a private sector firm with over thirty years experience. And they have a very robust analysis of economic impacts of historic preservation. So number one, historic districts, one of the things that, that study after study has shown is that there is an increase in jobs. There is also downtown revitalization. There's an increase in heritage tourism. And there's folks that you, that travel to places because they, they like the charm. They read about it from Fredericksburg, Texas to Bernie, Texas to Charleston, South Carolina to Washington, DC. These are folks that, that, that traveled because they appreciate the history. The, the heritage tourists spend more money. They, they stay longer. They, you know, help revitalize tourism industries. There's also a decrease in foreclosure patterns among historic districts. And, but this doesn't mean that the reason why there's a decrease in historic or foreclosure patterns is because it's all the rich people own the buildings. No, they get divorced, they run up their credit card bill. But what that means is that these, these properties tend to maintain their value so they can get out from under them easier. And they can make money on it before it goes into foreclosure. They tend to maintain historic districts and buildings in historic districts tend to maintain their values in up and down markets. There's a promote, they promote small business on startups and young businesses. There's also the millennials and Gen Z, if any of you have like chimed or listened to these studies on these folks. They want to live in a walkable, bikeable city. They, they don't, they aren't suburban country people. They want to live next to their coffee shop. And one of the reasons why, when I wanted to move to the city, was because I was exactly like that. I wanted to go to the coffee shop and walk to the bookstore and then maybe go up to a yoga class and go get a green juice. And then I realized all of this is, is in my, that my own backyard, the, the town of Alpine. And so many small town historic districts have this. It's like a, it's a, it increases our walkability, bikeability store. It's also environmentally responsible to restore historic buildings. You use less materials. It is more costly. That's for sure. It's going to cost you more to restore a building a lot of times, not all the time, than to completely demolish and start over. But I thought it was really interesting. Mayor Blumberg, New York, that he did a study on the environmental, he, he had a goal to make New York the greenest city in the world. I don't know if you remember this a few years ago. So they did this extensive survey of all of these, you know, a huge amount of downtown buildings in New York and and the, the sustainable folks were like, yeah, knock down the old stuff. Let's get rid of it. Let's build, lead, flatten and certify buildings that use less energy. But one of the things sticks out in my mind from this study is that sorry, is that the buildings that were pre nineteen thirty were used less energy than the ones, especially the ones built in the seventies, eighties, nineties. Those were energy centers. And additionally, on first place of return, I want to talk about that. A lot of these cities, a lot of small towns, there's been a decrease in population. Historic districts. When you look at, okay, what cities, you know, are actually growing? There's like this big celebration because Pittsburgh, a few years, they're, they're in other cities. I mean, their, their population grows or declines. And then they start evaluating. You know, yay, we're, we're actually, you know, we're, we're recruiting people, we're, we're growing. And one of the things I find interesting is that there are actually a lot of these cities are growing in the historic districts only, not everywhere else. And there's tax generation. This doesn't mean that you're taxed like crazy from the city. There's this tax generation with sales and you know, there's also, with, if you're, if you're recruiting more heritage tourists, your city's going to be making more money in self-tax. But there is something, you'll hear this, and I, and I think it's important to, to note, you'll hear tax credit grants, tax credits, grants, and then all of us that have had historic properties are going, I don't have any tax credit grants. What does that mean? That is a separate thing through the National Registry. If you had a property that you wanted to certify historical and the National Registry approved it, then there are grants and tax credits that you can then apply for. But what are the drawbacks? Well, I would say one of the drawbacks that's not on here is gentrification. Poorly written, and let's discuss gentrification because this is important for Alpine. When you see cities like Santa Fe, Marfa, when you see cities that all of a sudden the local folks can't afford to, to live there, that's, that's important to discuss. I mean, and and our goal, that's one of the reasons why I think we need to really identify and, and decrease the size of this current historic district. Because we certainly don't want a historic district that bleeds into residential that, you know, makes it difficult for somebody like, it's all I can do sometimes to, you know, to repair, make minor repairs in my home. And I don't want, you know, all of a sudden now I have to go to a board and, you know, that, that things may not get done. So we want to be conscientious of that. I think maybe the board may think think not, but I think we want to be careful. There's, you know, overly strict review boards, you know, they can, you, you hear this all the time, like, you know, somebody getting a power trip because they're getting to approve my design. That's why we, it's very important that there's clear design guidelines. I don't think any of us in on this, you know, I don't think any of us around here want to scrutinize over warm beige or a cool beige or a paint color. You know, we need to make sure that ordinances, there's no subjectivity in these overlays, that somebody can't just, or, you know, Alpine's a small town. You know, maybe it's, it's like, what if I present something and maybe two or three people on the board, maybe I think they don't like me. No, there would be clear design guidelines that everybody would, they're imprecising. This is one of the reasons why you're here, so we can workshop this. And we want, we want the community to be a part of this. Let's, let's talk about it. There's also, you know, it is more difficult to raise a building if it's in a local historic district. That doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. And, you know, it is not a vacuum. A local historic district is not a vacuum, meaning that you don't, just because it's in a historic district mean that we, we are the final say. There's, we have, there's building, there's code enforcement, there's safety, there's, there's transportation and parking and all these things that still have to collectively make sense. And sometimes, you know, buildings, they're not taken care of and that you have to raise them. And nobody likes to see that. What the board would do is maybe we help find a buyer, somebody that would would buy that building. Or, you know, we, we, if it is raised, I think if anyone has a historic property, maybe the one adjacent to it, next door to it is in poor repair and has to be raised, then we can what happens to this property over here? If this, this now this empty lot, now they have an empty lot and a you know, a building that they think is undeterrible devalues their house. Not their house, their business. So we want to talk about this. And our, the goal of a historic commission would be to really, to, to be a resource to the community. My thoughts currently, they're not my, currently, the current historic district that we have says that planning and zoning is the review board. But planning and zoning, we spend a lot of extra time. We have a lot of homework. We have a great city manager, a great city secretary, great mayor. They give us homework and tasks. And also serving on a historic commission is an extra, it's an extra job. So my thoughts personally, I don't know, you know, what, what the rest of the four things, I think that the city should, if they continue with the, the current historic district, that they should establish the historic review committee. Let's go to the next slide. So let's kind of talk about our history. Why are we here? Once again, let's reference this current city ordinance that we have that was passed on February fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, yeah, two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and three, there was a, a study initiated by Texas Historic Commission. It was a historic resource survey of South Alpine. During this time, two hundred and seventy structures were evaluated over fifty block area. There is significant centered on Adobe construction over fifty years old. Fifty one properties were reported to be of interest for historical or archaeological value. And some of these folks, I think right about this time, that some of them received grants through Texas Historic Commission to repair their properties. And the discussions of historic district began to, to really take, they began to take place in different business groups. December two thousand and eight, a business development group, I believe this is the Main Street Program, began working, they, this working group listed the development of a historic district as their number one long-term objective. December two thousand and ten, planning at a planning and zoning meeting, boundaries were set for a potential historic district. These boundaries. So this was December two thousand and ten. March two thousand and ten, an examination of a historic overlay was initiated, but this is why. An examination of a historic overlay was initiated, but this is why. There, in in the neighborhood where I live in, on East So Ross, close to Lot Park. There's an empty lot and there were plans to build a, a, um, a trailer. Or a house trailer, um, lot with multiple house trailers. And the residents of the of the neighborhood were very concerned that it would devalue their homes. And they were knowledgeable. They came and they kind of hit council at the right time, so they created, they got petitions. They created an overlay. And, um, that means an overlay are, is a, you have a city ordinance. And then an overlay and an overlay. Also design guidelines. So those are are rules that you would have to follow. In a, in a historic district. Um, so planning and zoning set parameters to disallow modular manufactured homes. December two thousand ten. The ordinance was presented, the historic ordinance that is currently still listed was presented to council. And February thirteenth, it was signed by Mayor Jerry Johnson, City Secretary Molly Taylor, and Attorney Rob Hunt. The next page. This is the ordinance. I'm not gonna read it word by word. But I did summarize it, that this is available on our city website. We have, um, we're happy to print it out and show you. This is the current ordinance. Um, I did highlight it for you on the next page. The highlights say, this is this is the 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 goal of this ordinance was. The City Council of Alpine has determined that a historic district be created to preserve the integrity of homes and businesses that are landmarks and enhance the city's culture. Whereas the creation of the district will enhance, protect and protect the historic landmarks. Safeguard historic and cultural heritage, stabilize and improve property values, foster civic pride and beauty. And protect and enhance the city's attractions, tourists and visitors. The Planning and Zoning Commission has studied and reviewed standards for the administration of the historic overlay, also design guidelines. For the enhancement and protection of the district. For preservation of its landmarks. And the next page is another view of the map. A very large district. Um, is the map online? Yes, the map is on online. Is the map online? And is that, is the ordinance online?
Yes, uh, it is available in our city code. Or if you'd like, you can email me and I'll send you a copy as well.
So the next page you can go to identifies this overview or this overlay. Now, I'm not, I'm gonna just touch on a couple of things. Um, the following criteria. Advisory board would be appointed, so it was at that time that this overlay said that planning and zoning. This group would be the advisory board. And that the following criteria would be adopted. Um, buildings must be built on site on a solid foundation. Exterior finishes must be compatible with historic buildings in the historic district. Metal buildings must have an exterior finish. That is compatible with historic buildings in the district. They must have a value equal or greater than the median taxable value for each single family dwelling. This is important, it says for each single family dwelling within five hundred feet. But there's no mention of commercial building. The next page. That. There must be exterior siding, roofing pitch, foundation, fashion compatible with any single family dwelling located within five hundred feet. It must comply with aesthetic standards. You gotta be careful with aesthetic because you don't want anybody judging aesthetics when it comes, I mean, it's. Because that could be subjective. Comply with aesthetic standards, building set packs, side and rear yard offsets. I'm gonna go to the next one. If you want me to rework the word, I'm happy to. Be securely fixed to a permanent foundation. Exterior finishes must be compatible with historic buildings in the historic districts. Metal buildings must have an exterior finish that is compatible with historic buildings in the historic district. All signs and billboards within the district must be approved by the Plan and Zoning Commission before building permit is issued. Drawings. All this stuff. So. Luckily for all of us, I think that that our, um, city management. Thought this is unenforceable. It was too large, heavy residential. You can notice just if, there's no mention of commercial structures. If you go back and you read that ordinance, you're like, okay, this is, this is written exactly. For the neighborhood that didn't want the house trailers next door to them. Which, if this was a historic, a residential historic district only, maybe that would make perfect sense. But this covered all of Alpine. So, a task force was was put together. And they were, they, this was in two thousand eleven. So this task force, their job was to agree on a map of the historic district. So they knew, they knew this was too large. And they needed to agree on a map. Um, and then they needed to develop criteria for the historic district. There was a community, there was a a committee of one, two, three, four. Five, six, we had Carl Fleming, who was a chairman. Lucy Escobedo was a, was a member. Um, Glenn Ramsdale was a member, David Koller was a member. And they had two advisors, um, Dr. Pitt Sullivan from Historic Alpine and Pete Peterson from the Texas Historic Commission. You can go to the next page. Simultaneously, there's other business groups that are, that are working or that that created that study. That reinforce. Why a historic district. It would help Alpine. This particular study is called Alpine, Texas, A Vision for the Future. It's exactly a fantastic presentation. Um, we invited. Rick Stevens to give this to us, which are four several months ago. I would like if we have another workshop, which I hope we do. We invite him to give this to y'all. I mean, it's great. It's not just about historic preservation, but it is about revitalization. You can go to the next page. So one of the, the the Planning and Zoning Commission. And and the task force met for months and months, and I don't know how how many. I lost count, months and months and years and years. To try to. To identify or create a smaller map. And I think what they kept getting hung up with is that they believed that all these properties were historically significant, which maybe they are. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they should be in a historic district. Like I said, we wanna, I, we wanna be very careful about these going into residential historic or residential neighborhoods unless. Everybody in that residential neighborhood is like, yay yay, we wanna, we want this historic district. These are our next steps. The historic district is regulated by the zoning code. We would need to rewrite and edit. This, this ordinance. We would like to address the current. Overlay. That is written for a residential neighborhood. And and evaluate, okay, let's talk about what what kind of, um, ordinance would work. We want to create a smaller geographic area for historic district. One of the things that I I gathered in my three years of research is that. In Alpine, I believe that a a historic district that is enforceable, that makes sense for our town. Is a downtown historic district. So what I would recommend, and I think, and I'm not sure, I'm not speaking for everybody, this is. That we create a historic district that just involves a few buildings in downtown Alpine.
Good luck.
A few blocks, yes, sorry, yeah, a few, a few blocks. And if you go back, you remember there's, there's types of historic districts. So this would be a local historic district. This is not a national historic district. It's not a state historic district. This is a local district that would be governed by local ordinances. And and a design review committee. And if we create this, we'll look at some maps in a bit that we're gonna propose. Um, we would have very manageable boundaries that we would include. We would not include any single family homes. We would make sure that there's no single family homes in this unless somebody. In this audience today stands up and like, I insist, I want single family homes, and then we'll have that discussion. Um, we also think if it's in a downtown district only, that it would be, that we would have one. One, um, guideline that that all of these, these buildings mostly would have a similar style of architecture that we could clearly identify. And we would want to rewrite those di- guidelines to be clear and precise to eliminate objectiveness. Period. Um, also, I would propose we establish a landmark historic commission that would continue, that would be. We would have different, uh, uh, commission. That we have members of the historic district. At least one member that is a part of it. We would have, um, hopefully someone in the architectural or design community historian. Um, you know, and I would really like them to continue education and continue to learn. If you go to the next slide. One of the reasons why I think a downtown historic district makes much more sense than than this, if you look here. Um, we have landmark buildings. These are already landmark buildings in this historic district. Number one, we have the Brewster County Courthouse and Jail. It is on the National Register. It's also on the State Antiquities, um, landmark. The Holland Hotel is on the state register listing. Um. It's. Has recently, um, received, been nominated and approved. Um, to be on the National Registry. The Hancock Building, now, this is, if it goes that far, we don't know if it's gonna go that far. It is currently on the state listing. The Granada has recently accepted historic preparation hot funds. So let's talk about it. They've accepted hot funds from the city. Uh, maybe they want to be included, maybe not. Um. So we can go to the next state, it's next page. This is, um. A lot of this is redundant, but one thing that's important, oh, there's a lot of things that are important. Um. We would, this landmark or this historic commission, we would establish a landmark historic commission. Possibly, or maybe planning and zoning says, oh, no, no, we've got it, we can handle it. Um, and this. The the Landmark Association would then issue certificates of appropriateness if someone wanted to alter the front of the building. The front of the building only, and this is what you hear in like public right away. The facade, right. We all have different language for it. Um, they would review historic structure demolition. I also think a lot of our, um, neighboring cities that have historic districts. They award historic district improvement grants. And when I mentioned earlier that that about hot funds or hot grants. Every city has this, this, this group of sales tax that then are, we're able to use those for historic preservation. What I would propose, and this is half, this is all just a proposal in discussion, it goes to council. It's, you know, this is just what my thoughts are. That it would be fantastic if the Landmark Commission. Could would be the one that actually awarded grants for historic preservation, and they can work out a matching system. So if someone has a, you know, in a block of a historic district. They're in the historic district and maybe they need to repair the roof. Or the roof line or do some exterior things and it's gonna cost them thirty thousand dollars. Then if we have this group of of hot funds, it would be first come, first served. Then the board would then vote to actually match that. Not one hundred percent pay for it. I, maybe they would. But I think that would really help our community that we use this in a way that actually benefits Alpine. Um. And then if if folks are like, I I need more, I love this historic, this historic district idea. I would like to apply for tax credits, then. We would, we would direct them to Historic Alpine or or there's lots of, um, organizations that can help them help a building. Then possibly we can get on the National Register, but that's not what this tour does. We would just recommend go here. Um, and I'm always personally happy to help people look for grants and way to get things done. Um. So we go back to the the application, we go to the next slide. So the application process, there would be a, um. New construction, any changes made to the front. You would have a drawing. There's nowhere in here that says it needs to be stamped by an AIA architect or certified architect. I think all types of drawings in Alpine. You know, I think at this point we could all draw something by hand or put it, you know, or. Or, um. You know, submit our our ideas, um. That it would, there, the drawing, the idea, the plan would be submitted to. Planning and zoning, such historic commission. At the same time, they're pulling their permit. And this, the Planning and Zoning Commission would then have an open forum where folks are invited. People are able to give their opinions, people are able to participate. It's not a, hey, that's what we vote, yay or nay, there's, there's, you know, a, a due process here. Right. An advisory. Um, and then. They would either approve or deny. Very, I I talked to a lot of folks and one of the people I would like to talk if we decide to continue this is somebody from another historic. Um, a local historic, um, district. And somebody, it's how how rarely it is that they deny. Because that whole goal of this is we we want. Historic structures in historic district to be taken care of and to be properly maintained and whatever we can do to help that happen. Um, if you're gonna do minor maintenance, install a plant. Make interior changes, you know, roof replacement with identical materials. Paint, exterior, that does not need to come in front of a, um, a commission. Um, this is additional, um. Design guidelines. And, um, if you are gonna demolish a building. Um, we would ask that, you know, photograph of the of the proposed demolition. Why you're demolishing it, if you can have any historical photographs. Because our, you know, we don't, the last thing, we don't wanna building to be razed and then we have an empty lot for. Five or ten years and there's no way then to go survey that. If somebody comes in and wants to, you know, like, I wanna build that building as is. Um, I mean, we had a perfect example of, I mean, buildings, not all historic buildings. Last forever if they're not properly maintained. We had the Napa Auto Parts Store. It was the first silent picture show in Alpine. It was a large Adobe structure. It was a pretty amazing piece of property. And we had someone buy it and they had great intentions for it, but it has so decayed. It was so decayed and it was in horrible shape and they're like, okay, I don't think we can do anything with this. What we would have done is if that, if there was a historic district, we would have taken it, okay, can we find somebody to buy it? Can we salvage anything? Can we survey it? And at least have, you know, dimensions if somebody wanted to rebuild it before the demolition. So it's a discussion. And like I said, it's has to work and we have to work with building services. You know, we have to work with city councils. This is not a. A, um. You know, there's, it's it's always a discussion. So, next slide, this is simple process. In a historic district, if we decide to, um. You go to the next slide. Oh, I I had of you, I'm sorry. Excellent, there we go. Um. The, the process is, if there's a historic district that is agreed upon. And there would be, the application process would include, and this is a great little chart, if you can see it, there's an applications. Um, submission, there's a staff review, there's a hearing in action where at that time, all things go to the residents. If you're, if you are a neighbor, you're gonna get that that. Um, letter, if you read the paper, you're gonna see it. And the board would either approve or deny, and then it goes to council. And then there's always an appeal process, um. This is just a quick, the next slide is what we think our, there's. We would really like to clearly identify if we continue with the downtown historic district only. What the architectural style is, this is, we, you know, our railroad city is a Main Street commercial. Um, we would then, you know. Discuss materials. Also, you can go to the next page, this is a two-part commercial. Block. Um. This, I hope we have dialogue over if it continues, which is a a design guideline, um. I know that I'm exhausting you. How long have I gone?
Uh, almost now.
We're gonna go through this, but after, because I want everybody to be able to, um, ask questions. So, um, you can go straight to, um. The the following few slides. The, the following few slides and I, I'm, we, this is part of public record. You can have this, we could email it, it's on the website. These are just examples of design guidelines. But if you go to the first, the slide that says Alpine walking tour, historic walking tour. So this is a map that includes a lot of what is in this map. Not everything. I'm go to the next slide. The proposed District A. This is what, in my research over the last few years, I think is, is a, is a great. Opportunity for historic district because it's manageable. It's downtown, it's owned by mostly commercial businesses. You can see here, this, this, the number thirteen, that was the Napa building that was raised. It then goes in front of Sixth Street, in front of the courthouse and wraps around. That is, that is what we're proposing for. Downtown District A. The next slide. We've enlarged it to go and include the, the courthouse, which is already on the National Register. And cross in front of the, the Christian church, which is, which is one of Alpine's most significant historical commercial buildings. And the funeral home. And then the C, let's look at proposed District C. This one would, this is a little larger. It crosses in front of Granada, in front of Rongra. The old Alpine Avalanche. Now, this, this is our opinion, what would be a nice manageable historic district. And that's where I'm going to close. And I hope that, I hope that I've answered questions, but please. Please ask, ask us, I'll do our best to answer it. If I don't know the answer, we'll look it up. And I would also like the board to participate in this. And I know everybody's sick of listening to my voice. Thank you. So on this map right here, this is the C map. Yes, the proposed is what is in red. Yes, I'm so sorry. The proposed for these maps are in red. This would mean that Murphy Street and the south side of Alpine would not be in the historic district. If at some point we, our residents or business owners, like, we want to be in the historic district. That, I believe, would be considered an industrial railroad historic district because it includes boats. So we would want to rewrite that overlay and design guidelines that, that fit that. If someone decided, okay, hey, residents over here, we want a residential district. I would propose that would be a different residential district. So Alpine could eventually have multiple historic districts. I don't think we should start with multiple historic districts. I think we start with a small manageable historic district. And, and work with city council and our city manager and our residents. Yes.
Just curious. What is or was that? Because I don't think there's a building there.
Okay.
Oh, approach the podium, because people on Zoom can't hear, we'll do it that way.
Okay, property twenty-one, that is the, the lumber. That's Foxworth.
Yeah, yeah.
That's Foxworth, right? What do we know is the flea market, if they call the flea market, yeah.
Okay, so that was Kishmish. Again, I'm high, I'm guy fielder. I own multiple properties in Alpine, two on Alpine, one on Soul Ross, another one on Fourteenth. Maybe another one. I got three letters. So I got, they were surprised. I just thought I was lucky. So the, the wool building is down here, isn't it?
Yeah, the wool building, you can see on the next, we didn't include it in our proposed map, the wood wool building is number one.
But the old lumberyard is, is west, that's the old lumberyard or that's the old wool building?
No, that's the, we called it Foxworth, is Kishmish. Twenty-one is Kishmish. Where was Foxworth? Yeah, yeah, there's two lumber buildings. That's why it's confusing. There's also a lumber building, Alpine Lumber.
Was Foxworth before it was Alpine lumber?
Well, Alpine.
I remember that because that was blue.
Yeah, Alpine lumber is.
We put the fine in Alpine.
Yeah, that's, that's over here.
But it should be Foxworth.
And then there's Foxworth, yeah, Foxworth. Yeah, but it's Kishmish. It's Kishmish, yes.
This identifies, this is Fifth Street.
Okay, hang on.
And that's Fifth Street.
Yeah, that's good.
That's Fifth. I'm still asking, what was that? Because the, there's still a lumber building.
Karen Williams. Now, do you know, and that's the one, there's a, there's a old mural on it. We actually need, I don't know if you can get into Google Maps, we can, that's, we can take a walk. We did that before, but there, there's Alpine Lumber, which is Karen Williams, that building, right? And then there's Foxworth. Yeah, Karen sold it to Kennedy.
All right, that, sorry, I didn't mean to hijack your meeting. I just, I was keying off of Fifth Street being there. And then, you know, from, from my understanding of Fifth Street down to Seven, then building number one would be the old Wool Exchange building.
We, and also I did not create this map. This is part of our historic walking tour that is available through the, the visitor center, but I'm thinking. Yeah, there's two number ones. I think. Oh, that's what it is, okay. Number seven, yeah. There is a, there is a guide to this. You can access it on Visit Alpine, Texas, and you can cross over the, the buildings to, you know, what exactly is number one, number two. If we do decide to proceed to the downtown district, there would be a thorough map. We'd probably use a Google map form. Did you mention earlier that there was?
Gio, can you, can you, Gio, can you take my question?
Oracle has a question.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, hi guys. Hi guys, I, I'm wondering if, I'm looking at. Holland and it goes down to Third. And, uh, Third Street, right? And so, when you're saying include the district, is it the buildings that are facing. Holland, whether they're adjacent to it. On, on either side of it, or is it just the buildings on the north side of Holland?
That's a good question, because we have new building, right? Not everything, to be classified as a historic. Contributing property, it needs to be fifty years old or older. So you would have, if, if for some reason, if, if it crosses, it would be. We could do it both ways. We would identify it in the overlay. Is it? We would have to clearly say, do you want it both sides of the street? You want it one side of the street? What do we do with those buildings that were built in, you know, nineteen seventy? Those would be non-contributing. So we would have to clearly identify. You know, Guzia, I mean, that's a great historic opportunity. I, I don't, I.
Gotcha. Yeah, I got you, okay. The same, the same. Does the same apply to number, the buildings identified as number forty and forty-one, the church and the mortuary? Because they're on the north.
Can you repeat that?
Would the same principle apply to the buildings in the map identified as number forty and forty-one? That are on the north side of West Soul Ross Avenue?
This, in this map, it's not included.
Oh, the church.
Church.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yeah, the church, yeah, the church.
I mean, that would be what we would talk about when, they're both historic structures. We would, I mean, separate discussion.
Okay. Okay, yeah, it's confusing the way it's bounded. Because even at the north, at the east end of your Holland Avenue, redlined, it doesn't go north, it doesn't incorporate the block, it just ends. So, and, and I know that number one is a train station, so it's pretty old. Yeah, that, yeah. One is the train station, seven is the Woolly House, the, the, the storage.
I, I'm so sorry, can you repeat that?
Number seven is the one that's that big one, is, doesn't True Value use it for storage now?
Yeah, number seven is the old Wool and Moe Hair.
Yeah, Wool and Moe Hair, yeah. I call it the Woolly. Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, anytime.
I'd like to make a quick announcement. If anybody needs to leave, if you'd like to sign up over here for updates, you can leave your email address or your mailing address. And we'll be sure to update y'all with any future historic endeavor. Wanted to make it known before people start moving.
My name is Jo Antoinette Boninsuela. According to a lot of people you hear, I'm a transplant, my birth certificate says Alpine, Texas. My family actually. Built a lot of the buildings that are here, the Catholic Church being one of them. Ran the cemeteries because nobody else was here. My question is this, you want to make this district, and I'm, you know what? I grew up in this, in LA, Oxnard and San Diego. I've seen it done and I've seen how it pushes out people. How are you guys not going to be the same? Because what I'm seeing right now, and I'm going to say shame on you, is that you only put and you sent out. Little notices to people that are in that area, but it affects us all. And mind you, my house was built that I, I inherited was built in nineteen forty-seven. Now, any changes I have to do now, I have to go through a historical society for some strange God reason, and I'm not understanding why. So, that puts an impact on me because I don't want the same thing. I have two things that. For my electricity, I have two breaker boxes. And now I have to go through hoops to get it fixed. Your historical society is following some regulations because what you coded from, from the Texas Historical Commission. Now, you want to change what the Historical Commission has for the state to fit Alpine or to fit you guys? This is my question, because a lot of what you're saying is contradicting what is on for the historical commissions. Okay, and not a lot of people, especially on my side of town, knew about, none of this was going on. Which I'm trying to figure out why. Why keep it a secret? Other than the fact that a lot of ordinances that I've found that have passed. Have been done because these people over here, sorry, which are my people. They don't bitch and moan, well, they bitch and moan, but they don't complain and they won't come here. And that's what a lot of what I found, as a lot of Alpine people. Is, okay, they're not going to say much because they're not going to come. But a lot of them like me, I'm getting tired. I'm getting older, which is, you know, and you, and it's funny because I'm older than you, since you graduated in ninety-one, I graduated in ninety. I don't remember the, the, the Mercantile open when I was little, and I was here every other summer, every other Christmas until I was seventeen.
It wasn't open, it didn't open until ten years ago.
Exactly. And the only reason that we have people running around in the streets is because somebody opened it. That's what happens. But when you don't have a dead building, you have addicts, you have. Animals. That live there. So to say that, oh, now we have this and this is how, no, this is, a lot of the times when you want to do something. You push and you push. Now, here's a perfect example. You're, I just saw this right now, now I'm disgusted. My house is valued at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. I don't see a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar home. In a, in a, not even a eleven thousand square foot home. But the Richie Hotel's at one nineteen? How the heck is my home more than the Richie Hotel? And that actually is a landmark. Okay? Cutbacks and everything is what I'm seeing, and this is what I'm seeing bad. I've sat on the boards in San Diego when Chicago Park was trying to get demolished, when Boyle Heights got taken over, and when Chica's got taken over in Oxnard. And I'm seeing the same thing here. The only thing different here is that Alpine is more high school. If you're in with your cliques, then you're okay. But when you're not in with your cliques, you get shitted on, you get everything else, and that shit needs to stop. My aunt made four hundred and thirty-five dollars a month for social security. That is not enough to sustain her here in Alpine. A lot of the older ladies and older gentlemen on the, on the Mexican side of town cannot afford what this will end up happening. So please keep in mind. And if you want, and you say that you're for the people, then start inviting the people, start going over there to talk to the people. Because I can tell you right now, you did it, because I started on the loop and went all the way to the cemetery. And nobody knew about it.
I will say, it was on the radio, I heard it twice.
Ma'am, not a lot of people, not a lot of people, and a lot of them are Hispanics. So unless you're doing it in Spanish. And now we got Filipinos. So are you doing it Tagalog? Are you doing it in other languages? No. You need to take, you have other people now. We're not just white, okay? You have other ethnicities that need to know, but they need to know it in their language.
You at all, but I just said it was put out on the radio station for the.
I don't even listen to the radio because y'all's radio station's boring. It's a local one. Yeah, it's boring.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Moody. I'm in Ward Five. And I just wanted to sort of get clear on this myself. I appreciate the presentation. I did download it from the website, so thank you, Gio. And before I was, I, the, that vision study also that popped up, that's online too, right? So, okay. But in reference, in reference to your conversation, am I right that this new. District that y'all are, that you're proposing and maybe the board is on board with, I'm not sure. Would re, would essentially rewrite the ordinance to remove the historic district, district from any of the residential. Places south of the tracks that it already is, and it would just be in this downtown, like, three or four block area. So what they're proposing would be to remove that, to remove it from.
But then that's not historical. I'm sorry, because you're historic. I have a picture of Alpine in eighteen eighty-seven. It had seventeen buildings and none of them were on y'all's side of the tracks. They were all on ours. Want to make a historical district, then make a historical district and make it where it needs to be.
I agree with that.
Benefits and for everybody else's benefits, I mean, that, that have money. That's what ends up happening. And essentially, this is what it's going to. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound bitchy or anything. I've seen it firsthand. I've seen my friends and family get kicked out of Boyle Heights, out of Bologna. Out of San Diego because they could no longer afford it because of what happened. So if you're going to do it, you know, do it. We have a lot of pride in, you know, and even though, you know, the Hispanics were sent to a day school. That was three, three stories high because they weren't allowed to have ward school, you know? But everybody here still takes pride in that. I wouldn't personally, because me, I'd be like, hell no. But, I mean, that's what then, that's on them. But do it to where it's, it benefits everybody, not just y'all. And I, I don't mean to say y'all, like, I don't even know if you own building on this side. Oh, that's not a town. I know you do, or your family does, but.
Do you want it or you don't want it?
Personally, if it's going to enhance the way that it usually is, hell no.
Very specific.
Let's ask one more thing. And so the reason, so going back to the reason to have one at all, you know, I, so. Lots of towns don't have any kind of historic district. So the reason that we would want to have any historic district. Well, especially a historic district in the commercial area. Would, we're thinking that that kind of thing brings in more. More tourism for one thing, and that ups the taxes that come into this, the sales tax that comes into the city. Probably also ups the property taxes, I guess. And then that enables the city to do things for everyone, right? So it like, that money comes in from the sales tax that I guess goes into the general fund. I don't know how any of that works. And then we use that for the streets and for infrastructure and for the things that benefit everybody, is that right?
That's correct.
And so that's why we would want to do this.
Well, that's what, there's a con, maybe some people don't want tourism.
Right.
You know, there's a group that, yeah, we would like tourism in the city. There's two primary industries. I mean, we have Soul Ross, we have tourism. And, yeah, and, and I gotta thank you for your family's contribution and thank you for getting up there and. You know, I appreciate it. And we're gonna, we're here to talk it out. And, and I agree that some of the most historically significant, the most historically significant. Buildings are south side. That doesn't mean if we create a historic district, we want to be conscious about it not going into. To residences, but that doesn't mean that we don't think it's significant. And that's why I brought up this study, because there are so. But that doesn't mean that we don't think it's significant, and that's why I brought up this study, because there are so many.
Great, but my question was, are you following the THC or are you doing your own? Or like how Alpine usually does is they just do their own, that, you know, they get from over here and then we're voting over here and, oh, we don't like this because it's not gonna benefit me, so we're gonna put this in? That kind of crap needs to stop.
I think that's what we're trying to do, is to push that out of the way and make it where everybody's feels good about what happened. That's what she's going for.
Aren't you talking about a downtown?
Then let's start, let's maybe do an industrial, maybe um, do you have a comment?
No, I just, yeah, I mean, I can't think of people who wanna talk to, you know, it's like a one-on-one. My name is Greg Egan and I own a couple of buildings in town, I own Murphy Street, the proud building. And um, I guess the question I have to go to is what he's asked, the one we just brought it up. Can you keep the residential historical district without, I don't, that doesn't have to go away, right? That can stay. This can just be an additional district that focuses on the downtown areas you're talking about.
That's why.
So it's not gonna go away then?
Well, well, we, we need to talk about, we have this gargantuan district.
I understand that.
We have an overlay that just talks about the residential district. So part of our workshop is, let's create dialogue. Do you, if we are, if we want to continue with the residential historic district, that doesn't mean it has to go away. But it doesn't apply to a downtown district, it wouldn't apply, that historic district may not apply to something along the railroad. Um, so it's all, that's why we're workshopping. We wanna hear your thoughts and what you would like.
Yeah, it just certainly strikes me is if it goes away and you create the small district, you're gonna go right back to the same problem you had. The ordinance was created ten years ago, which was somebody's gonna come in and put a bunch of town, you know, mobile homes crossing the same people.
Yeah.
And then we ticked off.
I agree, so I do have a question with our, to our city manager and Aunt Gio. Would zoning not take care of, so they wrote this historic district, I think it's important for everybody here to understand. There was a historic district that they created because they didn't want manufactured homes going next door. But if, how would zoning control that? Or just, do we have to have ordinances everywhere to protect?
Well, I think it's something that definitely needs to be considered. Um, the city council, of course, did ask you all with updating the map and working on that, getting the updates done. Um, but correct me if I'm wrong, wrong, y'all are correct. Um, the zoning should play a significant part in stopping that.
Right, cuz you would have, can you explain the three types of, or how many, the five, like the, the, the types of residential zoning that we have currently? And everyone can look at this on a.
So currently we have R one, R two and R three. And R four, R one is single-family residential, so you can put one house there. Uh, R two is for duplexes and townhouses, R three would be apartments, and R four is for mobile homes. So, the main thing I think to focus on is that um, we don't have a building standards for the state of Alpine, so we don't, in the R one, you don't have to have a certain type of house, a certain kind of way. Uh, you could, you could put a metal building there and make it into a residential housing that fits the engineering plan based off of our code. Um, I think the main focus of the historical district is the way that it looks to the city. You wanted people to come to town and not see a Mueller building in the middle of a beautiful historical district. So, that's the preservation, I think the main focus is for the downtown historical. Like, if you have a, a really cool old house on either side of the tracks, South Side, North Side, there's some really cool historical houses on the North Side and the South Side, that you can preserve them yourself, because we don't have any building standards to say that you can't. So if you wanted to make it into a Dobby or whatever, as long as it fits that in the zone that you're in. So if you wanna do a single-family in an R one and make it based off of the old historical, you can do that, there's nothing stopping you.
My whole point was just that there needs to be significant updates to the zoning map, period. So, I mean, the way that we have um, have it zoned currently from, you know, the last couple decades or what have you is, I mean, it's spot zone, there are R fours very close to Murphy Street. Um, so we have a lot of work to do in that regard as well. It should stop, or it should regulate, rather, um, but we have so much to do.
What if we were to, I'm just fucking up my head right now, were to find a way to, you have a downtown historic, right? And then you mentioned already where you can do a railroad historic. And then you define those historic areas, you have this big one that's just historic district, well, let's break it down, we've got downtown historic and this is what you can do in the downtown area. You've got this side of the railroad tracks and Murphy Street, make that railroad historic and that's what you can do in that area. Does that make sense a little bit?
A lot of communities do.
So I see, and then you have some residential off of it, I mean, the property I'm in is actually residential zone commercial. In the historical district, so, you know, I don't know which way I'm turning. But I just know that there has to be a way, and, and to your point earlier, I totally agree with that. I feel like there's a lot of areas that I, as we came into Alpine six years ago, we, we visited here many years prior to that and we didn't just move here. But, you know, I love the other side of railroad track, but we almost purchased a home over there just because we could, you know, bring it back up and do those things. So I see a lot of work that could be done over there. And I agree with what you're saying, I couldn't walk into one of your meetings and understand anything you're saying either. You know, so I understand where you're coming from. Well, I think the letter that, that I received, you know, I'm still in awe that I received it. And I went from loop because I have, I'm related to almost everybody here. So I went, started from the loop this way, where the, where the, we call them buddy bumps, from the buddy bumps all the way to Vegaville where I live. And I went to, at family members and I went across the street to family members and nobody knew. And then I had them reading, and they didn't, you know, they're reading and they're like, okay, what am I reading? Well, I don't know, because I didn't know this thing was happening.
Is that an easy fix though, Gio? When you put things out, can you put like both the Spanish and, I mean, put it down?
I mean, that's something that should have been done a long time ago because you have primary.
I disagree with that.
You're, you're, the primary people here are Hispanic.
I agree. Thank you for the feedback. Um, yes, I mean, of course, all of these letters and things of that nature do come at an expense to the city as well, so um, I mean, we have to weigh that too. We did send it to a large number of property owners downtown, we had it on the radio, we had it on our website. I mean, I'm not sure what else could be done aside from emailing, you know, all of our utility customers, which would, would again be expensive.
Yeah, can, can I answer for you? What is your name? Joe, Joe. I live in the, I live in the other side of the Mexican side of the world, and I just speak Spanish, this is my first language. Uh, I will love if somebody want to contact me for questions to present to the board.
Great, go ahead.
So, I, I would like to be the channel, you know? So, so, if they need in- information, Spanish, I can come present to the board. I know, I understand when I can get it in. When I moved here twenty years ago, I didn't know any English and I had to learn. So I would love to be the channel. I will answer questions, but I can come and present to the board and then, I don't know.
Well, see, and that, that was supposed to be what we need, is just to have a meeting on that same town with that way that everybody there is comfortable with their own, because unfortunately, it does sound racist, I apologize. But a lot of them won't come because they were brought up, you don't question, you just roll with the flow.
Yeah, you just answered to, to my questions that many people haven't asked me, how am, how come Hispanic people, they get involved in the community?
That's the way they're raised.
Know the language, they, 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 you know, they feel better than part of it. And I would like to be that channel to communicate. I don't know everything, I'm learning. So, but I can come and present or get all the information or come and ask you, you know?
So.
You can only say that in the church.
I mean, as far as the radio concerned, they do a Spanish cast at seven, we can definitely have, add that to, um, I'm more than sure they'd be willing to do a Spanish announcement on the radio. Um, so again, thank you for that.
From one more, I just moved here within the last two weeks, moved back. Um, I kinda wanna piggyback off of what she's saying, and that is, um, when I worked at the Avalanche, they would give us materials of the meetings ahead of time, so we know what we were gonna deal with. And then the meetings would flow a lot smoother because, you know, you, you knew what was gonna be addressed. So, for me, I think that we should have hands-on and, and at least bilingual materials, you know, because, you know, a lot of people, I have a smartphone and I don't even know how, the smartphone is smarter than me. So, you know, I can just imagine other people. So you wanna welcome and open up these meetings, you know, you need to make it welcoming. You do.
Maybe we could put a marquee out front or something that, you know, that there's gonna be a meeting and it's Spanish on the marquee.
You know, maybe have an interpreter, you know, or, I mean, I, I don't know, that's just my suggestion.
Um, it was just purchased, the community center was owned by the and it was just purchased by the crisis center.
Yes, crisis center. Can I say something about the map?
Yes.
Uh, in two thousand nineteen and twenty, I redrew that map at the advice of the Planning and Zoning Committee, not that one. Uh, does anybody have a copy of it?
Um, we do, can you uh? You have that, show the PDF of the map that was originally attached.
I think this one I just passed off to them.
It's like this one up here? Yes. Is that not the one you did?
We have a art mapping program and I work with city planning and zoning commission, which would have been Tom Kennedy, Dennis Foley and Carl Lemon at the time, at that turn, and uh, we redrew or modified the boundaries just a little bit. But it was never um finalized.
That would be fantastic.
All my information. No, they didn't. Well, they never, there was some loose ends that just, I think there was, I don't know how to say that, I think there was some frustration on every part, they just saw it.
That's why we're here to begin with, it, it got started and then it never really got completed the way it was supposed to, and it got so large that you couldn't enforce anything. And so, um, Abby, you know, took hold of it and said, we need to clean this up, we need to find a way to make it work for everyone. And that's why we're having these conversations now. And look, the way I'm looking at it, and I'm pretty sure a lot of people are going to look at it, is it's more benefit to clean up for you guys than it would benefit for the whole. We're, that's why we're here talking to find out what you have to say about.
But I'm, I'm gonna take exception to that, because jobs are jobs and everybody benefits from having more jobs.
Sweetheart, there are a lot of jobs here in Alpine, nobody here wants to work, and I know that for a fact because, I mean.
So, so you're saying more jobs and nobody works is still not a ninety?
Exactly.
But more sales tax, which goes to the general fund, which does.
The sewer and the water, and, and this was coming from my father. My dad graduated in nineteen sixty-eight. There was under five thousand people in Alpine when he graduated. There has always been under six thousand people in Alpine since, and if you look, it has, Alpine hasn't grown. There's a lot of money that, that were allocated here in Alpine that have disappeared and nobody knows where the hell it went to.
I have a few questions.
Can you state your name and?
Oh, Beatrice Grising. Now, uh, you send out correspondence and it's only addressed to certain individuals where it should be addressed to all of Alpine. It's going to affect all of Alpine. Unless this district thing that you're wanting to do is just going to be implemented just for the North Side. That is the, the uh, this, that's what you imply when you just send it to certain individuals. Certain individuals, you've got a lot of nationalities here. Not just home, uh, the owners of the Ho- you know, Holland area, the main, the main business district, okay? Now, to simplify that, that thing about, you know, the translation, you put your letter on the front in English and in the back in Spanish. That simplifies your cost, you're gonna send it out anyway, so do it. That is the easiest way to do. Now, your content, this is the first city letter that I have ever received that actually has a signature block. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have, uh, who do I call, uh, it doesn't have a phone number, it doesn't have an email. And that is something that this city really needs to get busy on. I mean, uh, yes, you may know who Gio is, not everybody does. If they have a question, you need to, that is the most important thing in anything you send out, to let them know who they can contact and how, give them every opportunity. That is the best thing you can do, email, phone and the name.
I'd like to point out our contact information is on the.
Yes, that, that you, your name and your, and this phone number, but it doesn't, they, that it's yours. You know, it, it states that it's City of Alpine, where am I reaching, City of Alpine? I'd gladly love to see your, your information here. And, and that would assist a lot of people, and you would get a, a better feedback on, on what you're trying, and the content. As that young lady said, stated, it's always very important before a meeting to give them the opportunity to see that presentation that is very badly presented because you can't really see it. You guys really need to reconfigure this to have that behind you, so that while you're pres- you're presenting, everybody in the audience can see. You're twisting your heads back and forth trying to make heads or tails of what you're doing. You know, what you're saying, and that's the easiest thing to do. These things are the worst thing for you. You guys, you know, tape your meetings and everything, but when a person speaks and, and you're, you're speaking mainly down, you can't hear anything. You can barely hear what you're being, you have to know exactly what you were saying in order to understand what you were saying. And that goes from the city council meetings as well, you know? Um, I used to hold a lot of murder boards, uh, and I had to teach people how to speak so that everybody could understand you and what you're saying. When you're talking down, nobody knows what you're saying, except you. And the people in the room, if they can hear you. But that also helps people understand you and understand what you're wanting to do. And that way, you know, having half of the information never helps. Having the full information always helps. So, I mean, those are just my things. And my opinion on this bis- a historical business district, it doesn't bring you any more than what comes in without it. It does bring an expenditure to the owner of the building that you're gonna classify as a historical building. Because you will have to change, you cannot put current material on any historical building. You have to get historical stuff. You can't get the current window at fifty bucks. You're gonna have to pay for the window at two hundred bucks, okay? You can't dictate what goes inside, but the outside you do. And that's just going to bring more expense to these individuals who are already, if you notice, I, I mean, well, I've driven downtown. Half the population of those uh merchants are closing. And most of your stores are closed. So what good is the business district if you've got empty buildings? The thing is, what you need to try to get is to get everybody on the same page, not only you, but also city council. Because they're asleep at the wheel. And what's gonna transpire is the same thing, we're, you know, they're gonna Marfa Alpine. And that's the last thing anybody needs, because then all the residents, the majority of the residents who built Marfa had to move out because they couldn't afford what came in. Right now, they can't even afford, I, I don't even know how you guys survive. I live in Maryland and my cost is not as high as yours. And it's ridiculous that it is that high. Your, your economy i- is gonna be, I mean, it's, it's outrageous. So to implement another expenditure to people who are already struggling, I don't see it, I don't see the necessity. Because it's not gonna bring you any more that already comes in. So, I won't say anymore, but that's my thought.
We appreciate your feedback.
It is seven o'clock, you still have an actual meeting, but I think you're gonna need to.
Okay, okay. Right, okay.
Hi, it's Kirsten Moody again, work five, I just wanna thank all of y'all. Um, and city staff who are here after hours for giving countless hours to figuring this stuff out for all of Alpine. Hosting such an open forum for us to talk about this. Um. And in general, just sort of having Alpine at the top of your minds and trying to help us all figure out how to make it a more vibrant place, so thanks to all of y'all.
Um, so are we okay to adjourn the workshop and continue the?
Yeah, you can add a couple more items on, on there, but like I said, if you wanted to reschedule.
Um, okay, let's go to what are our last?
Oh, the next one was discuss burning store district.
That, that probably needs to be an entire meeting, and what, what that intent is, is that. If we decide, we, we do need to address this. This map, and we wouldn't, if we, when we address that, we need to address the, the design guidelines. And I loved your comment, and, and it's so important. That if we have these design guidelines and we're putting in words out, hey, this building needs to be restored with one hundred percent the original brick and the original color. And we're in a day, a time of modern technology where there's digital printing and three D printing, if that's a better word. There is a submental process, and I think part of writing a local ordinance. And local design guidelines that we can, we realize, I mean, we, this is Alpine, we are not Georgetown. Um, we, we are not, this is not a wealthy community, so we have to be very reasonable in these design guidelines, who what is allowed. We wanna maintain these buildings, the last thing we want is somebody to. To, you know, you buy a building, you pay a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for your building, the building next to it is razed. Another building is, is erected that then devalues your building. So that's, that's, you know, we do wanna protect the property owners, but we also, our main goal is, is to protect our community. And that's why we're having this discussion and everything that you said today is noted, we appreciate it.
We just have to redefine a lot of things, folks, dude, I'm seventy years old and. Culture, our society and our definitions have changed dramatically. Don't believe that, that anybody in Congress that kind of won't. We need this. And we're now also working on some other ordinances, trying to. More succinctly define some, because they currently are begging that, that there's holes that you can drive a milk truck. So, we've got a lot of workloads. And a lot of it, and, and I'm, I completely agree with person, the city council. Drew, Jessica, everybody, everybody's working overtime. And the Alpine spent forty-two years getting in this hole, it's time to quit digging and start building the hole, that's what we're finding.
And then, you know, you have people that are willing to help. I mean, they're not.
I'm gonna invite you to step outside. Talk to you, actually.
They, they're not welcome to help, and I can say that personally.
I would like to help you understand.
When you figure that out, let me know.
Yeah, I'd like to know. Just people don't wanna help, they don't, they don't wanna talk, I grew up in the body. You know, and I've gone through it, I've tried to get.
You know, thank you, give me your information and we'll.
They do, I try to get a lot of people from the body, I grew up there. You know, I got family all over there, and you're like, you're, you, like you said, yes, they're, they're raised a certain way. They don't wanna talk, they don't wanna throw their opinion in, but everybody has an opinion. And here's the thing is, as I've been here in Alpine, I left, been back seven years. You know, I'm brave enough to come up here, I've been to city council meetings and talked about myself on behalf of a lot of things. But yet, everyone in the body has the same thing, same complaints, I'm like, come on, let's go, let's go, let's go. Nobody, but that's what we're all trying to do here is, hopefully we can all work together and figure something out. The word's gonna benefit or somebody, I mean, I'm from there, you know?
Benefit that went out consequences. Because I can tell you, when I came here five years ago and I started speaking and I started talking. I was getting written up for almost everything. For some crazy stuff. That was ridiculous. So. It, it, you know, I didn't do high school very well in high school, I'm not gonna play that if you want, and I don't play that if you want. I didn't grow up in Alpine, but I was shipped back here every other summer, every other Christmas. My family originated from here, we got kicked out of J K National Park, so yes, my roots are here. Not like a lot of people.
My heart too, you know, I, I'd love to see this, I wanna see this too, I'm sure, really do, especially in the body, you know, the body, yeah, there's a lot of history going there. But they're trying, I'm, I'm new to this, this is my third meeting. That's what I forgot to tell you. This is my third meeting.
I've been, I've been on boards from San Diego, Oxnard and East LA, this is not new to me. I know how to read ordinances, so I read the THC before I came here, and then when, when I'm hearing it thrown at me, but then you wanna revamp it. So it, no, and that, when we start doing that, this is where.
It's just a discussion, you know, that's why they were wanting to do this, and yeah, maybe they should have said it, put it in Spanish also, you know? Cause that's majority of the people that do speak Spanish, and they're not understanding what's going on. But again, that's why it was a discussion, and you bringing up your points, like she said, is noted, and let's have another. Workshop like this and bring your, you know, bring everything you got, so they'll, you know, we could all understand what's going on. You know, you could be the voice, just like Eva, for the south side. You know? We do, we do, we, we do, we need. Hispanics, Mayas, someone to talk.
Well, I'm not, my dad's La Panafachi, so we're not Mexican.
Okay, well, that, sorry, I did cross something there.
There, and there, you can see there's the issue that they categorize everyone of darker skin. And not all of them are, you know, they're different races.
But we're not here to see boys, Mexican, boys. Yeah, it's precious, you'll be here and help us with your ideas and your inputs so we can work together.
Well, I started a petition, I'm just waiting for the, the attorneys to bring it to me, um, and that's to help with the tech, the. What do you call, where are you at, Jessica? The, yeah, the permits, cause that's a crazy fee. So. We stop, as soon as that petition's getting to me, I'm starting on the south side and I'm going through while Alpine is continuing about five months.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your inputs, we're here to help.
You're passionate about Alpine, we love that.
And that's only because four hundred and thirty-five dollars for an elderly lady. I was disgusted the way Alpine do that. And you still have a lot of that don't have. Agree.
And, and I appreciate your family's contribution to Alpine, and there are, we, you know, have the historic Alpine Association. We like you, if you wanna volunteer and help, and, and we would love to have everybody a part of that, and. And tell us talk, tell us stories, tell us that, you know, it's important, there's so many things, we could go on and on, have we?
My family goes back a hundred fifty. Here.
Fantastic.
Do we wanna go ahead and close everything out?
Yeah, let's go ahead and adjourn, and then let's get to our meeting, feel free to stay, um. And we will have another meeting, another workshop, invite you to come, um. My contact information is on the website, on the city website, um, feel free to call me. Email me, yeah, you, you, I, I am here and I'm here to learn. One hundred percent.
Every day.
Oh, wow, well, we appreciate you coming and speaking.
Everything has to go through its process, but we have to let everyone know.
Right, I, I think that what, in the workshop, did it go to members that were in the historic district, is that how you decided you got?
Yeah, anybody in the proposed, uh, historic district during that area, we.
Okay.
I will tell you, I did not get that, and that, I, I'm not in the downtown area, but. If you're starting anything, doing anything, everyone should know whether they live there or not.
Is it, was it put in the newspaper?
Because it affects them, they live in Alpine.
I believe so.
It was?
I think so, there's something in the paper, I believe.
I mean, that's why I listen to local radio stations every morning, because then I understand what meetings. I don't care, that's my main reason.
I, I never knew what I wanted. I know, background in engineering and geographic information. What I've been doing since the early nineties. Before that, I was an architectural engineer. And before that, I was. So you better hurry up. You gotta get to that, you gotta get to the stall. Joanna and Matt, how are you? And what gentleman here?
One.
Not that one there.
Right, so it's better to.
And not that one there.
Are you able to see the monitor? Okay. I think that front row. Maybe.
Usually have that one on.
I think the front row is the hardest one to see a monitor.
Would they just turn it out? I mean, does it? Do we need to? No, no, I mean, could they turn that towards the front row?
Oh, yeah, I guess. Yeah.
You know what I mean?
All sorts of things you can do, yeah.
Maybe we create a monitor ordinance.
Just a recommendation.
Okay, it's time and we go ahead. Everybody, I would like to. Call this meeting to order on Monday, August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three at five thirty P M. Do we have any? Public comments?
Would anybody like to make comment?
Do we have any public hearings, Gio?
No, we do not.
Have you all had a moment to look those that were present? Last board meeting, did you have a moment to look at the meeting, the meeting minutes? And approve them?
Yes.
I am. But I had difficulty hearing the last meeting, so I am gonna let.
I think we have.
Yeah, yeah, okay, awesome. So. Do we have an approval?
I will make in much.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Okay. Um, let's begin our discussion items.
Oh dear.
So. I'm gonna hand this around to our sign ordinance. Um, this is such an important thing to tackle. And um, thank you for your help. I would like, as I did reference a few sign ordinances across the state. That I did and some additional. Um, I've listed those in our packet. I um, just as an oppor- an opportunity to discuss. Um, how, how much do we want to change our sign ordinance? I also propose that we get a partner in here to help you because it does help having somebody else maybe that you would have that you would meet with. And go over these ordinances and because what we would like to do and what I think Gio suggested. We do is we redline the current ordinance. And we make edits that way. It's very easy to redline. That's the sun right behind. The old chairs. It's easy to redline and make amendments because you can on the, the website. Or you pull up our ordinances, you can right click in the top hand corner and it creates a Word doc. And in that Word doc, you can then, you know, you'll have it, the, the ordinance clearly written out. And then you can make recommended edits and red or strike through. Gio and I worked on when we were looking at the historic ordinance, we, I did it using Google Maps. I don't know what your thoughts are about that. I know Google Maps, Google Doc. Um, but that's so we could see each other's live, you know, if I made an edit just to kind of keep it there, but that was because I had her, we couldn't find a Word doc with the. The um, the ordinance.
Um, well, first let me just start back up and, and the reason why for those of you that are here and haven't heard. The reason why we're even looking at the sign ordinance was because it was brought to our attention. Um, that there are several signs as you come into Alpine that are really kind of in disrepair. Some have been repaired since then. There's a lot of old poles and posts and it just doesn't look. Um, nice. If you're, if you have, you know. Visitors coming into Alpine, that's not really, and it ties into the new outdoor lighting ordinance, to be perfectly honest. When, when it was brought to our attention, I started reading, I was like, um, this sort of crosses into the outdoor lighting realm of things. And so I, I was reading that and Laura Gold, and she's online, and thank you for being here, Laura. Um, I went and visited with her online a little bit. We, we emailed back and forth and I met her at another meeting. And she told me and sent me links um, for some areas in like Flagstaff and Sedona and, and I'm looking at the things I'm like, really, number one is all we really are started looking at was to clean up. The signs that are in disrepair, okay? It's not about going crazy with it. But then when you looked at the area, it's like we have this beautiful outdoor lighting and, and it's dark skies and, and you, you know, when you look up at night in the mountains and you see all these Pizza Huts and all this stuff, it's like, that's not kind of cool. So what if going forward, just going forward? As new business is coming to the area. And that we revamp a very simple kind of signing ordinance where I don't want to tear the thing apart. That says we do what I call monument style signs going forward. And that would be, you know, whatever we decide of, of like a, you know, six by six foot on the ground. You don't, you know, not up in the air type thing, but it's, it's more like what you would see in a Flagstaff. Or I see there were some other ones that were put in here like Sugarland and things like that. If you go through areas of Austin where they really brought the signing down to the point where if a sign has to be replaced, if it, you know. Going forward, then the new person putting in the business, like a Dollar General or whatever. I, I don't want to see it up there. I want to see it down lower. So it doesn't take out all the pretty stars and things that we're trying to show all of our visitors. The lights are facing downward. And to your point, thank you for that, Matt. Um, if you actually read through the outdoor lighting ordinance, there is an area in here that all we would need to change in the, um, and Laura pointed this out. Was if we took the, uh, and I, I'd have to find the area, you'll have to forgive me because I really haven't read as much as I should on it right now. Is that um, if we referenced, just redlined that area and referenced the lighting ordinance. Because what many don't know, and, and as we go into this with new businesses coming into the town. Part of the outdoor lighting is you can only use certain colors on signs. You can't use, you know, and you, you have to go with their guidelines. Has nothing to do with, you know, throwing up a yellow Dollar General sign. You, you have to really look at the colors that they are saying that you can use and how the lighting has to be directed down in certain areas and that has certain speculations. So I'm like, why don't we just, what she said, reference, I said, that's a great idea. We just reference from here to there and make them go read that. And that way then they're killing two birds with one stone. And for me, if I'm looking at my, in, in my, my fairy tale world. I found a, a, an individual that I spoke with that I said. Cause I know one reason why most of those old poles and signs haven't been taken down is it's not cost effective, you know, for the owners to do that. And I understand that. And so what I did was I sort of reached out to a couple of individuals and, and they were willing to. And this is not something we've all really, we kind of talked about it, but not completely. And, and these uh, individuals were willing to take those posts and those signs down. They had the most of the, what they, the equipment to do it. I think a lift was the only thing they were missing. Um, and at no expense to the owner. And the owner just needs to release, you know, waiver, so we can take it down and they will haul it away because they want the metal. You see what I mean? And so for them, it's like, okay, I'll do that. And so I feel like we could probably make it a win-win situation for the owners of the properties. And for this gentleman or these people, one or two, whoever is up doing it, do that. And then move, moving forward to say, if you've got to put it aside, a new sign up. You got to look at the new outside lighting ordinance and we really want to just bring those signs down.
You know, that stuff's already in the dark sky.
It, a lot of it is in here, but, and, and there was a difference in the, um, the, like, I think on the signing, it says you couldn't do more than two hundred square feet. Dark skies says no, no, dark sky says no more than two hundred square feet. Um, the, the signing ordinance says no more than one hundred square feet. I don't think any of them should be more than one hundred square feet, to be perfectly honest. And we just needed to find those guidelines. That's it. I mean, I just didn't want to go crazy with it. Just keep it simple, clean up what we need to clean up and going forward, bring them down.
Especially I like that going forward because it's not gonna change overnight.
No, you don't have to tell businesses to change, but let's say, you know, and then I need, you know, I was really visiting with you guys on the ordinances because you have to enforce it. So before I go through redlining and saying, oh, we're gonna do this, I want to know what you feel about it because you're the one, I'm not out there telling them they gotta do it. You're the one who has got there to tell them to do it. Sorry.
Oh, and we have a question. Laura, sorry. I could see a hand.
No, no. Oh, you can't see me. Well, so much for video. Okay, um. Um, the ordinance, the lighting ordinance where it says two hundred square foot for your outdoor sign. I don't know if that's a typo, but that's really big. And that's a huge sign and I don't know anybody in Alpine or anywhere out here that really needs a two hundred square foot lit up sign. So if you guys recommend that that be amended. We can go back before the council to amend it. So I want to just bring that up here. Gio, would that fly or?
Just clarify the two hundred feet is in the sign ordinance and not the O L O, right?
Yes. It's, well, no, no, it's in the outdoor lighting ordinance.
Yeah, but our, the science, excuse me, Laura, the science is a hundred. I, I found it in there and then two hundred and she and I were putting our numbers together like.
Yeah, yeah, she's right. Yeah, the sign, sign ordinance is one hundred, the O L L O says two hundred.
I'd say that we could do them in one ordinance because it's uh, relevant. So we could propose, y'all could propose amendments to the sign ordinance, it, ordinance. And uh, we could include whatever section of the O L O that has the sign uh, that has that.
Yeah, has that, yeah, citation.
Section at the same time. It should be easy enough.
We just need to decide what size we want it to be, I think. A hundred is too big. Who knows, right? I don't know.
And I agree with what you're saying, you know, of course, we'll enforce anything y'all do that. Jessica and I have already started any new C O's at the mouth. Make sure they comply. We're already in talks with Hampton, McCoys. So we're trying to get everybody on the same page, but legally they have until two, two thousand twenty-six to comply. And we're trying to get them earlier.
Move on that way.
Yeah, and you know, I'm fine with the monuments. You know, I've seen them out. East, east Texas before, you know, I love your ideas. We'll enforce whatever y'all feel is best. I just, couple of questions in regards to exactly what we had talked about last time with going, what's the definition of going forward? In regards to.
The timeframe.
The timeframe or any business, you know, right now, I hate to bring, bring it up again.
Well, in my, in my eyes, honestly, once we write the ordinance, we make the decision and we write the ordinance and put it out there, then any new business that comes that applies for signing after that ordinance has to follow that. And up until then, you know, we're good. If a sign, you know, gets broken or whatever, then we may need to revisit that with ever, that particular business or property. I, I get that. It could get kind of, you know. I think if a business, let's say Pizza Hut, for example, okay, I'm just picking on them. Um, they're out there and let's say their sign gets broken again. And they have to replace their sign. Well, they're just replacing what they already had that was grandfathered into the old ordinance. Does that make sense? But if, let's say a new Dollar General comes in. And because we've got two other Dollar Generals with big old yellow signs, do they get to put that up? No.
No, no.
They have to go to the lower monument sign because going forward, that would be what we, you know, put out there, so.
Hundred percent agree with you in enforcement. Just my biggest question now is.
Which is why I need to talk to you because you've got to enforce it. I know.
Going out there, going east, you have the Valero, if I'm not mistaken. Say they turn into a Texaco.
If Valero turns into a Texaco, that's a new business coming into town and I would think they would need a new lower sign.
If there's no work being done, it's just change of ownership, that would be.
It's a change of ownership.
It would be.
Texaco comes, they can afford it.
Well, I, I disagree a little bit just because we did a survey a while back about how many vacant commercial buildings we have in the city of Alpine. And if you take that into consideration, the infrastructure that's in place from code enforcement standpoint and from a building standpoint, the pole and what's available to that person, why would you make them spend thousands of dollars to replace that into a monument when they're already putting all of that money into putting in a new business? You're, you're really hindering a new business owner by making this facade. For the town to look a certain kind of way when it really, you're making it harder for somebody to come into town and open a business by making an added cost.
I think if they're a big, big, you know, like, something like that coming in, they're already gonna have that built into their budget.
Right.
Really, they are. And to be honest, a monument sign is probably gonna be cheaper than putting up one of those great big in the sky things.
No, I mean, I want they're just replacing. Yeah, just replacing way cheaper to do that.
The point is that they're coming in and they're applying, then they need to build that into their budget. It's a new business. And if you start trying to make a gray area there, then you're gonna always walk.
Yeah, well, I just want to. Make sure we don't, we don't have a gray area, you know, no matter which way it is.
You know. You know, it's one of the older businesses in town were to, you know, need to change a sign and they have, you know, I'm trying to think of one. I know. Casey's, let's go Casey's, because that's the point of contention, right? They've got the old clear frame out there and they've got all the old poles. And if you, in my eyes, if I'm reading the current sign or, excuse me, yeah, sign ordinance. Then it's telling me that that sign doesn't really do anything. It's there and it used to have wiring, but it doesn't. And if I read through and find that one area, it's basically should be gone. It shouldn't even be there. Because it doesn't, it doesn't point to a business anymore. Now, if Casey's wanted to come in and take that sign and make it like nice new with that sign. To me, it was already there and they're repairing the sign. Then they should be able to do that. Let's say Casey sold off to Valero, okay? And Valero is coming in. I can tell you that Valero is going to have that built into their budget.
You know, which is fine. I'm just worried about the mom and pop shop, sure.
Mom and pops are not gonna really get hurt too much. And to be perfectly honest, most of them are gonna put a sign, I think, right there on the, their building if they can. That's the cheapest way to do it.
What if there's already a sign? I'm, I'm just throwing up Amigos since we talked about that last time.
Which one? There's another amigo now. Like, wait, what?
You know, just like mom and pop, single store owner, not a Texaco, not anything like that. They just want to change their signs. Go from Migos to Trucker's, for example.
If it's the same owner and they're just changing their sign out, then it's the same owner.
No, would it, if you sold it to Ms. Branch and she wants to just take your Amigos facade off and put branches. So we'd have to make them take that down. That's on a fifty dollar certificate.
The whole idea of starting a monument sign movement to begin with, to see the sky.
Yeah, no.
To see what we have in Alpine or.
Yeah, and during dark skies, we'll be able to implement.
Right. And, and to be honest, if they were to read into the new outdoor lighting ordinance, it's already been passed. That sign's gonna probably be so dark and the way they have them put it, it's not gonna be seen anyway.
Right. Which, you know, that's what we'll enforce whenever we go out there and do those expansions.
If I'm out of line here, step up and let me know. Cause I mean, to me, if I'm doing, if I'm looking at this, you either have to say at this point, everything goes this way, or you're gonna always be back.
No, I just want to know what those points are. So where are we starting?
And that's why we open it for discussion and say, come on, guys, tell me what your thoughts are on it. But if you're asking me, that, that's where I go.
I'd say if that thing ever comes down, if it ever jumps down, it has to be, then it's gone.
Agree.
I've done something on, uh, I already ninety on Holland, where I took a porch down off of a, from a building downtown.
Yes.
Once it was down, that's it. I cannot put it back up. That's like, if it comes down, it's down. But for a new owner to come in to take down this big pole, build a new monument, that might be, you know, fifty thousand dollars.
But wait back up now because what we're offering right now is for the owner of that property because that sign doesn't even have a sign in it right now as it is. And it's not working. It's just holes and a frame. So we have someone who says, I will take it down for you. It's not gonna cost you anything. Just, you know, basically do the legal stuff, sign the waiver, say it's okay for me to do this. And it's gone. And we are actually offering that for the local or the business owners because we know it's an expense. That's why they're still there and we want them gone. So find a way to make it go away for them for free and give them a certain period of time in which they have to comply. After that time, it's their expense and it has to come down. And that's when you write the ticket.
And before we go to the Kirsten, what, what is your name? Clayton, okay, it's nice to meet you. Okay, all right.
I'm Kirsten Mady again. It's like, I feel like I'm, I don't really think I'm part of your committee. I'm sorry. Um, but I would just wonder, like, if I was trying to figure out. I mean, number one, I really don't like the ugly signs. I'll just throw that out there. Like, I'm part of the one, like, taking picture, like, take down those ugly signs, but. Um, also being somebody who wants new businesses to come here and um, you know, existing business, whatever. So like, I know, how much money are we talking about? Like, how much does? How much does it cost for a new one to say, okay, we've got these two? Okay, we've got these two poles up. But we need to bring them down, but I got, like, I have no idea how much any of that costs, do we know those things? Fifty thousand dollars?
Again, if I found someone who's willing to do it at, at their own expense.
To bring them down.
They will take, as long as the, the owner signs saying it's okay for me to take it down, he's gonna haul it off because he wants the metal.
Right.
So, you, there are ways to make it happen, if it doesn't cost so much.
So say there was a Texaco. And it was like a running Texaco, but then it shuts and there's no other big thing that's coming in, it's like. You know, restaurant or something, right, and so they wanna put up there, I mean, that's not a good one, cuz restaurants probably want it low anyway. But whatever, some business and there's an existing structure. How much would it cost that business if the. Things were as high as they are now? To put up their new sign where the Texaco already was, like, how much does that cost, do we know?
And just in a lower.
No, say it's still as high.
Hold on, we're way cheaper than, yeah.
Right, I know it'd be cheaper, but like, how much are we talking?
Just a couple of thousand.
Couple of thousand, then what if, I mean, is there a way to cut off existing?
And bring it and low.
Yeah, to like, lower it, so like.
Expense, then you might as well just take it down and start over.
You cut them off or whatever, I mean, somebody comes out there with, you know, just. And, I mean, I don't know, like, I definitely, I see both sides of this, cuz I really want. To it, to have it not be ugly, and I also really want new businesses to have an easy time coming in. Anyway. So there you go.
We're all on the same page, I do wanna enforce the noise ordinance, we're not, well, that too, but. But your dark sky compliance, that's, that's a big reason I came out here as well, you know, I enjoy the night skies. Taking pictures, doing all that, I hundred percent agree with that, but at the same time, being cost prohibitive. I would talk about in the previous workshop, you know, for the mom and pops, you open up a sandwich shop right here. Well, this signs up, you can't display the previous owner, so you take that down, well, now you're fixing to have a thirty, fifty thousand dollar. Dicky, no matter what, even if it's a monument sign or if it's already up, and where I'm getting, just trying to find the gray area. If it's already up, just. For what we're looking at, just previous.
Example of a mom and pop that might do that in the area that would have a tall sign like that and change the sign out.
J R M Electric.
I decided by the building. You know, why would I have, why would I, fifty thousand dollars, it's me.
I'm sorry.
I own a small business. You know, J R P Electric, say I wanna. Buy that building and now I gotta cut it down, you know, have it cut down, put a monument sign when all I gotta do is replace the face.
It's a building that you're already in currently, but you're not the owner, but you're operating up here.
Also, if you already leased the building, why couldn't you do it under your lease before you move out, before you buy the building?
It's not my building.
I gotta correct, is the dark sky, that's already long.
Yeah, we, we already enforce that, we already enforce that.
So anything new would have to be dark sky.
Correct, yeah, any commercial occupancies, we do anything now, we make sure they will be dark sky compliant. Before a C O's issue, so we've already started that.
Right, that was my question. So like the McDonald's, that sign that beats the dark sky.
Correct, okay, yeah, at first, when I moved down here, I thought, well, we have a broken sign, but now knowing. Dark sky, well, there's a reason why it's not as bright as what it is, granted, it's. Which we don't want.
You could see it like every, everywhere.
But you know, that's some, you know.
He said, hold my pictures, I don't wanna be there.
The laundry mat doesn't need it.
Right, right, yeah.
And, you know, maybe that's a better example for me as well, just knowing, cuz I'll enforce anything we have to, that's, you know, that's what we're for. I want it for the betterment of our community too. But let's throw McDonald's for, for example, they have the big sign up there, and this is just me. They move out, they, a Whataburger moves in, you know. My personal opinion, granted, would I love that sign down, yes, I know they have billions of dollars, but. Take all the money out, just for compliance sake. My personal opinion, they shouldn't have to remove that if there's no work being done. You know, if they're not making any changes to anything else, they're just changing out the faces. Do I agree with it? No, but at the same time, we can't be cost prohibitive. And if no work's being done, it's hard for us to. To make that change, well, this has to come out, which relates to my second concern in regards, you know, I get it, I'm, I'm glad we have somebody that wants to volunteer. That's about, my only issue on that is if, how we word this. Is if you know somebody that's doing that, what do they want the metal for, is it for recycling, for money? I'm ju- is there, and I don't know.
That would be his only, that's his only reason is he, he's taking the metal.
Who in this or?
Can I ask a question? Andy, if you could lower the hill where the McDonald's sign is located, would you be able to? I'm, I'm being serious, the McDonald's sign has, has an exquisite. Advantage because it's on a hill. So even if it met the height requirements, because it's on the hill, you see it from everywhere. So if you could remove the hill, would you? No, no, you couldn't remove the hill that it's sitting on because it's part of the topography, so. The question about whether it should be a monument sign when you drive into town, whether there's something else to change. I honestly think a, an additional or further conversation about signage styles. Would be really good um, for a workshop. The, I, I don't mean to put it back, you know, put you guys back of, in time, you know, push this off further. But there's a lot of opinion here that I'm listening to and some of it's really good. And, you know, everybody's on other sides of the fence here, so it might, it might be really good to hold this as a workshop. And that's it, thank you, sir.
And I agree with the workshop, and well, a lot of our signs, I do wanna just bring this up. That are standing and ill repaired, um, were damaged in high winds, so a lot of the reason to bring them down is safety. If you've ever been here in a windstorm and you see stuff blowing off the sign, which happens a lot. So I, you know, I, that is important to acknowledge that this is not just for aesthetic. That it is the safety, and that's why you see, love it, high winds, all the signs are low.
Of course, the easy thi- uh, easy thing right off the bat, if anything new, it has to be new ordinance.
I just wanna know where that gray area, it would be, just make sure we're all in agreeance about what we enforce. Whether this business has money where it's not, and we need to be one hundred percent across the board. Of whether we, they have to take it down or they don't, you know, I'm, I'm fine either way, I just wanna know what we enforce.
And we need to make sure we don't have any two hundred.
And, um, and this also goes with the historic ordinance overlay, when we address that sign, signage is a part of that, we need to make sure it correlates.
Yeah, I love the monuments, I know the idea of this. I definitely want that.
And the one hundred versus two hundred.
I think it's just assigning ordinance.
So would y'all like to schedule a workshop or, um. Just let me know. Or if you'd like to get together and do a proposed ordinance and. Have it as an action item at the next meeting, since it's been a discussion item that could happen as well.
I think that would be, you know, to at least get everybody. Putting their ideas down and what you feel like would work, and then. Putting that into the next meeting.
So, does that have another discussion item?
Not a discussion, I. Maybe it's a workshop.
Okay, would y'all like to schedule that for the next meeting?
There is, what would help is before the workshop, is if you're able to start that redline process and I would. Get anybody to help you.
I'll be honest, I don't wanna do the redline process by myself, because I, my thoughts are one way and you guys have thoughts another way. And so I feel like it needs to, I need someone there to balance.
What if we had a business?
But then we'll, we may end up redoing it.
But if, if the two of them work together on it. If you help. Yeah, I mean, that way, you know, we have a business owner here that maybe buys the building, maybe the two of, I don't know. Do we need to redline it before the workshop, do we have a workshop?
I mean, it's really up to you, I wanna go about it, eventually it does need to happen and then. Um, we would need a redline to make. An actual recommendation, city capital, that point that we need to be, you know.
Right, right, and I, that's one reason why I haven't redlined yet, because I haven't been able to sit down, really, and have a one-on-one conversation. With the people that are gonna have to do it, and I'm not gonna redline it until I can have that conversation.
And that's fine, we can just keep it on as a discussion, whatever you prefer.
And, and also, if there's a sign or something that you feel like is a hazard, please blow up my code enforcement complaint form. Um, cuz that's what we're here for, um. If there's something that needs to be taken down because it was a hazard and we're not seeing it, um, please complain.
All right. So the next discussion item is, I wanna discuss, and this is in reference. To. Two meetings ago, um. With, with, there was a proposed lithium battery facility that was going up near a, um. Yeah, going up near residential. And, um, you know, can you bring us up to date on what happened with that?
Yeah, Blue Stone, and, and Lincoln Nebraska, they had, they had backed out of the project, they're gonna build outside.
Okay, so our, our discussion item in planning zoning is that it wasn't zoned properly. Because that, the area that they proposed a lithium battery storage, there were, there's, you know, reports and studies that they could actually. Um, create fires and hazards, um. For the community, but it wasn't zoned properly, it was, it was, um. Was it a C one or C two? Which that isn't the proper zoning for an industrial. Um, storage facility. Um, so we started looking at other industrial areas along or in Alpine that are within city limits. And I, this is another discussion item, another day, cuz it's gonna, I think we, we've all had a pretty, um, there's a lot that's happened in this meeting. But I would like to begin to, to, to analyze what industrial areas we have within the city limits. What type of projects are allowed, what type of industrial projects are allowed in those industrial areas? And do we need to evaluate? Those, um. That zoning, industrial zoning, do we, I mean, if, if, I know there's industrial zoning right by the tracks in town. Close to, off of Murphy Street. Um, would. What, what, if, if there's a lithium battery storage proposed there. Would that be okay, according to our zoning?
Our, our, uh, M one. Very big, super big. I own that property. Regards to, uh, my shop is right there, I had that whole property, it was R four. See, my, my property was zone C two, when I first bought it, it was R four, when I bought it, I had the whole thing being zoned. I border industrial on two sides. The railroad and the big electrical substation. And where our, our proposal is to do a lithium battery storage there, on port, portion of my property. And so it ties in right next to the substation, it feeds back into there, but I didn't know that was different. Okay, cool.
So, okay, so your, your question.
I didn't know it's different problem.
Okay.
So, the M one industrial district in our code of ordinance is really, it very big. Much in it, so I think it should be, you know, revisited in general.
Right, I mean, yeah, and our, and our ultimate goal is the safety. And welfare of our citizens and. We wanna make sure, you know, if, if one of these things pop up. With, you know, that it's playing the middle town, and I know that there's, there's procedures, or they'll say, no, it just burns in this little capsule. But it is, it is toxic. I mean, that is, we know it is toxic, they do catch fire, they do explode, we wanna make sure our ci- our city is safe. And that when these things, cuz it, it is an important thing for sustainable energy going forward, I get it. But we wanna be smart at the placement, so can we. Address our M one in our industrial zoning in the ordinance. Next meeting. As a discussion item. And, um, and look how other cities have, have handled these, I mean, I think maybe if they're outside of town, something, it may be better.
Don't lie in the city limits.
I'd say, well, if y'all could just, you know, keep Abby informed as to what y'all, y'all need on the agenda, then you could send it all at once.
Okay, okay, and then what are your thoughts, so your reason? And I wanna make sure I understand, so you're proposing another lithium battery storage facility?
Yes.
And where, where?
It's on Eighth and Murphy, right there next to the creek. And, um, the property's right next door to the substation. My construction company's over there, that's most of that, three quarters of the block, I sold a quarter of it a long time ago, but.
And it's zoned, it's just because of the substation, or, oh, it's zoned Z two.
Yes, I was gonna get that, all of the property rezoned. So you would wanna rezonate to an M one? Yes. But the company who's leasing it is supposed to be doing all that stuff, which I know you guys.
I haven't heard anything from your property, yes.
Was a different one.
I haven't heard.
We talked about that already before.
I knew you, you discussed it, but as far as anything.
To clarify, that would need to come before you all, you have to make a recommendation.
To rezon.
The council, yeah, be a reason. Okay, supposedly they put all that, they apply for all that stuff.
How close is it to residential?
I don't know what's right across the street, but right now I got the creek on one side, industrial. The railroad on one side, the whole, less for substation on the other. The other side was the old barber shop, it's been vacant for, you know, probably thirty, forty years.
And would you live next door to it? If it were.
I live over.
Right.
Other side of it. Substation, they keep adding on expanded that, they bulldoze two houses, get that in there.
But we appreciate it, okay, all right, thanks. Yes.
There in answer three, just make one comment about the, uh, train area coming through there, and that being industrial, doesn't mean it'll be industrial forever. If that train was ever moved, which I think Texton had talked about in the past, possibly in the future, if that would be recoded. So the decisions that you guys make, uh, with that property, you know. To not place it possibly in industrial in perpetuity.
It's been a long day.
Anything we do is, is in perpetuity.
True.
Okay, okay.
Um, basically, I was just mentioning that. If that, if the entirety of that area that the train track runs is, uh, labeled as industrial. Doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, that will stay train track forever, I think Texton had looked in the past about moving that, so that could affect.
And, yeah, and I think it's when we carve out this industrial zoning, let's look like what types of businesses. Are. You know. Allowed in, 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 in industrial zoning, a zone area in the city limits.
Right now, it says each site in the M one district shall be subject to the following state development regulation. Reserve, like, you know, like, they meant to go, go and put some structure.
And we've talked to the city, our city attorney. Yeah, but who, who can advise us, cuz as a planning and zoning, I don't think any, I, I'm not. I, I mean, I, I know, I see red flags, that I see red flags. And, but I would like an expert to come here and say.
It would be good to get ideas first before we send something to them, they do have, our, our law firm has a. Like an environmental attorney.
Right.
But they're principal.
Yeah, right.
So if we could get together all the questions that we might have from, can we outlaw this, or, 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 you know, rezoning, can we prohibit that? I think it'd be better to go with, you know, some questions first.
Okay, so we'll, that I is, yeah, we'll add that on a discussion item. Next, and I'll. Follow, so thank you, thank you, and, and we aren't trying to squash your, your business. It's, it's, and I understand like business and I know sustainable energy is some, going, looking towards the future. We wanna make sure it's safe and it's a, you know, very.
Safe for fire.
Right, yeah.
No, no, if you wanna do your own research, City and Dickinson. They actually have one installed down there. Um, and I don't know what it's, I'll be honest with you, I'm just looking. Uh, and I don't know what it's, I'll be honest with you, just looking at the pictures, I know there's a house across the street. So if that's something you wanna look into and see what their dogs were.
I mean, I have seen them pop up throughout the United States. I've also seen them cause. You know, break havoc with fires and explosions and toxic chemicals, so.
Biggest parts, the, you can attest to, enriched, is that thermal runway, once that lithium. There's not enough water in the city to make it stop. You just have to let it burn out.
Yeah, and there's, there's chemicals, I think they would, they buy then to put on there, but then it is a chemical. Okay.
It can be done right, it's just about location.
Right, I agree, and it is, yeah. So, yeah, it's an important thing for our future. We're here to support, you know, okay. It was me. Still me. Let's go to, um. Oh, okay, um.
I think we should table.
Yeah, can we, um, can we table, I mean, I, I think that a lot of our discussions tonight were different. Are, were in fact about controlling growth of stores deemed detrimental and not just stores. I think we need to paint that control growth of, of businesses that are deemed detrimental to small economy. And we can continue that. Are there any action items for this evening? Do we have any board member comments for this very long day? Any? Okay, I, I'm new that we adjourned. Do we have a second? Matt? Do we, are, you have to be all in favor of adjourning? Thank you, thank you all for enjoying, like, thank you for sitting through the everything. This, I gotta tell you, when, is the longest meeting you've ever had. Some of this is a result of the planning and zoning commission for several years, really not doing anything.